I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight for our interview with Timothy Pavova. First time, good right. We want to thank the Westwood Media Center for recording this tonight. Eventually, it'll be available for everybody to look at, particularly Melinda Garfield and Charlotte Lynch, who do a lot of backroom work getting their media center together. So anyway, well, we start off with a pledge of allegiance. Fine, thank you. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose name liberty and justice are. Thank you. So Tony, Mayor, how would you like to proceed with our questions?
Well, we want to welcome Superintendent Pavova to Westwood. I think we are just gonna, we have some questions for you, and we want to leave a little time for Q and A at the end for you to ask us any questions. So if we want to get going, Charlie, I think you've got the first question.
Okay, it's the, I'll just read it, okay? What are the core values that drive you as an educator, and what core values would you want to see in the staff you hire?
Yeah, so if you look at my resume, and I know that was out there for the community to see, I mean, it's front and center at the top of my resume. And the most fundamental, important core value that I hold is around collective responsibility. We all have a collective responsibility for all of our students, no ifs, no ands, no buts. And if there's one core value that the educators I hire want to hold, it's that one. It's about the collective responsibility for all, and it's about kids first. Not in any particular order, the other two core values, one is around the importance and centrality of the instructional core, that the most important things that happen in schools happen every day in the intersections among students and teachers and content. And it's not about the corners of that triangle, it's about the edges of that triangle and how those things connect with each other. How do we help build strong relationships between students and teachers in the presence of rigorous content? So that learning can happen in the environment, and whether that's academic content or whether that's SEL content, that's important in any respect there. And the third one is around communication collaboration. We can do much more when we work together, when we have an environment and a culture in which we are open and honest with one another, than we can work happening in silos. And whether that's within, you know, my leadership team, or that's, you know, with the school committee, or where that's working collaboration with municipal government, that importance of communication and collaboration is key. But in the core values, number one has to be, it's about all kids, all the time, always. All means all means all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Tony?
Great. So you've been, you know, I've seen Bill Ricker for a long time. Westwood's a bit of, is a different community. If you think about preparing to enter the district that, you know, has some differences from your past experiences, what strengths do you think you could bring to bear from your past, and what challenges do you think would present itself?
Yeah, so I mean, first of all, and in terms of, I think, one of the reasons I'm interested, I mean, I've been in Bill Ricker for 26 years, right? I spent my whole career there. But I know I'm in a place where I'm personally and professionally ready for change and looking for a community whose values that they profess are aligned with the values that I just spoke about. And everything that I learned about Westwood, or Westwood, I'm gonna keep doing that because I live in Westford, so my apologies if that slips out. Everything I learned about Westwood as I went through deciding whether or not to apply, everything I learned by, through research, everything I learned by interacting with the search committee, and certainly reinforced by all of my experiences today, visiting schools, speaking with staff, speaking with kids, speaking with parents, has told me that that's aligned really, really well. So in terms of experiences, right, I can, again, I've been doing the job 11 years, and I'm only halfway through my career as a superintendent, I've got at least another 10 left to go. And I think, you know, among that is really having an inclusive planning process for how we develop our strategy and our vision for where we need to go. As part of that, you know, I would need to have an entry plan as I come in. And that's meeting with stakeholders across the community, from students to teachers, to paraprofessionals, to tutors, to support staff, to building admin, to district admin, to all of you, school community members, to the town administrator, members of the city council, police chief, fire chief, you know, other groups in the community, all the people that I don't know yet, that I would need help identifying who those people are, with answering and asking four key core questions, which are, what are the strengths of Westwood and its schools? What are the challenges that we face right now? What are the opportunities we have? And then what are those things that we want to maintain and protect? So that's a, in terms of coming in, I think that kind of approach and strategy, which I did when I entered in the role that I'm in right now, even though I was an internal candidate, it was still important to do that. And then using the results of that entry plan to develop the next set of strategy for the district, right? There's a strategy right now that, I think the timing of this works out okay, works out well. Current strategy kind of runs out in 2024, so using that initial entry to then say, okay, here's the areas that we want to focus on as we develop the next strategy for, let's say, 24 to 27, and bringing that inclusive process together. So when we just developed our district strategy in Bill Ricker this year, we had a steering committee that was district admin, building admin, parents, we had two students as part of that, one upperclassman, one underclassman from the high school, because we wanted to make sure that their voice was reflected, because they're ultimately who we are there to serve. We identified four core themes of our strategy, we then created working groups around each of those four themes. And those themes were informed by a set of community visioning forums that we had done. And again, we brought folks into that conversation. And that, so that really strategic approach, I think, is a really important thing. I think the other strength that I would bring is really having developed strong relationships with municipal government. And I realize you have a whole bunch of questions, and I'm answering a lot probably in this first one. You know, you know, as you have my packet, I mean, our town manager wrote one of my letters of recommendation. I'm blessed to have worked with somebody, he's been in the role for 13 years, I've been in the role 11 years. My offices are not in a school, they're in town hall, it's just sort of our orientation of how we're organized as a school and as a town. But that means that we talk constantly. And so we've been able to do great things by working collaboratively together, whether that is, you know, the building project that we went through where we opened up $176 million high school in 2019, to implementing full-day kindergarten through a long-range financial plan with support from the town manager and through our town meeting, to the incorporation, adding of elementary health teachers by, through a separate funding article at town meeting that was supported by not just us as the school department, but by the town manager and the police chief. So that level of not just school department, but town-wide collaboration, I think, is another strength that I would help bring.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor?
Can you please give examples of quality programs and/or educational policies to improve the quality of instruction that you have implemented in Bill Ricker? Can you give us examples of programs that were not successful and describe the course of action you took as a result?
So on the first part, you know, I firmly believe in the coaching model. You know, we've had literacy coaches in our district for a long time. You know, if you have really strong tier-one instruction for kids in the classroom setting that is supported, and with, the coaching model allows you to have that embedded real-time professional development, where there's a set of eyes in the classroom, where there's a level of collegial support that takes place, that's way more important than a curriculum you buy off a shelf, right? It's about really focusing on what those pedagogical techniques and skills are. We had literacy coaches for a long time. Early on in my career as a superintendent, we brought in math coaches. That made a big difference in improving outcomes for kids in mathematics. But one of the things that I'm really proud of is, it's not just enough on the academic side. You know, around 2016, 2017, we saw significant rise in some social and emotional challenges with students and accompanying behaviors, particularly at our elementary level. A lot of dysregulated students and some challenges associated with that. And I didn't know if this was going to work or not, but I knew nothing was not going to work. So we worked through a challenging budget process, but we made some strategic decisions, and we brought in social, emotional learning coaches at our elementary level. Those were not positions that existed previously, there wasn't really a script for how to make them work, and I didn't care what teaching license they had. I just wanted really good people that knew how kids ticked and knew how to work with adults. And so one of the people we hired was a social worker, one of the people we hired was a grade-one teacher, another person came from special ed, a couple came from out-of-district, a couple came from in-district. And that was really successful at not only sort of triaging some of the immediate behaviors we saw initially, but in really helping provide support to teachers in the classroom so that we could work to address some of the unintentional things that happened that caused triggering events for kids. Because again, having that external set of eyes, but with that expertise and lens was really, really effective. You know, if we're gonna talk about something that was ineffective, I mean, there are, you know, I can think to, maybe this example isn't from my superintendency, but I'll go back to my time as a curriculum coordinator. So my first year as an administrator, so 2005, so I was in charge of the math and science departments K to 12 in our district. And we were implementing a new math program at that point in time. And we did not spend enough time upfront actually just talking about, how do you pace a program? How do you make sure you have those benchmarks along the way with how you pace it? And so what wound up happening is, kids had wildly different experiences that first year, depending upon what classrooms they were in. And so how we course corrected was that we assembled grade-level teams with representatives from all six of our elementary schools across the district that year. We pulled them together, we talked about, here's the must-dos, here's the nice-to-dos, here's the only if you have more time than you know what to do with to-do's. And so that, at least from an initial standpoint, and really that's, I mean, ultimately, that's related to really standards-based, you know, what really aligned with the standards. And that, I mean, that was 18 years ago at this point. So we've evolved and we've approached curriculums since that point in time. That's just sort of the first example that immediately comes to mind. And a more public thing that I'll just address, because in my current role, and while not programmatically, and you know, this is certainly public, because we had a couple of news cameras at a school community meeting a couple of weeks ago. We were trying, and we had settled an agreement with our teacher and paraprofessional unions that expanded their workday, so we expand the student day for kids. Our elementary school day is only six hours and 10 minutes long, our middle school day is only six hours and 10 minutes long for kids. We were trying to add 30 minutes to both of those days. Some of that instructional, some of that adding time for lunch and recess, trying to create an intervention block, a win block in both levels every day. And ultimately, the community decided that's not what they wanted, and that plan was voted down by the school committee. That is what it is, and we live to fight another day. But that was something unsuccessful in my, certainly in my recent past.
Thank you.
Given the stress in the lives of young people today, and the social, academic, and even financial pressures they face, how can educators in general, and the superintendents specifically, have an impact on the emotional well-being of students? So I guess I would ask you to speak to it generally, and for your perspective.
Yeah, yes, I mean, part of this is about making sure you have resources in schools. I just talked about the SEL coaches, you know, I'm gonna go as a way that we work to address that. I think, you know, we've invested heavily in social workers in our district. You know, we have a really high level of need in some places, and so that's been a really big investment. And part of that is just strictly making sure that, for example, we're allocating budgetary resources in a way that's responsive to our student needs, and not necessarily just responsive to how we've always done things. I mean, that's sort of a technical part of it. There are some structural components of that. You know, it's interesting, when I met with students at the high school today, you know, one of the things, when I asked if there was something, I asked them what they were really most proud of in Westwood, and then if there was one thing that they could change, what would it be? And so there was a student who kind of talked about that competitive pressure that exists, which I think is kind of, I'm hearing that sort of embedded in your question. You know, it's always about doing the next thing, it's always about comparing what college you get into. So some of that is around tone-setting, and sort of what we communicate about sends an indicator about what we value. And so certainly, while it's important to talk about, you know, the great successes our kids have in getting into great schools, that shouldn't be the only thing that we're communicating about or the only measurement of success. And so when I talk about going through that entry plan process and understanding what those values are in the community, certainly that's an important one. But what else is there, and how can we help create a balance? I'll just, I'll speak about this not, while not necessarily directly related to your question, but an example of how we, what we measure and what we talk about influences how we do things. And I think about our advanced placement programs in Bill Ricker. Our previous philosophy was that what we reported about was passing percentages on AP tests, and that was it. And so it killed me as a math person, because it was, our AP calculus class only had 20 kids in it, because all 20, it was a disappointment if a kid didn't get a five on the AP exam. And that's not an inclusive way of providing access to high-level coursework for as many kids as possible. So we shifted our metric. So what we started reporting out was not percent passing rate, it was how many kids actually passed, how many kids passed the exam, is very different than percent. Because I would rather have, you know, 50 out of 70 than 20 out of 20 every day of the week, because those kids had access to higher-level coursework. And so that, we saw our access, we saw our participation increase readily, and more kids had that opportunity as a result. So again, while not directly, and I realize talking about AP may be in contrast to the last thing I was just talking about, but just about the importance of messaging and what we say and what we value, it's important to use that to frame our conversations.
So to sort of follow up on that, because, you know, reporting out is a metric that parents would look at, but students might not necessarily know about. So how do you communicate that to the students, right, to say, look, we've changed the way we're reporting, and now you should feel free to take me?
Yeah, no, that's not gonna work, yeah. So I mean, that's really working with building leadership. You know, while I will try to be out there and visible in classrooms as much as possible, ultimately, they're gonna see their principal way more than they see me, and their teachers are gonna see their principal way more, or sorry, they're gonna see their teachers way more than they see their principal. And, you know, one of the things I wholeheartedly believe is the importance of having the district leadership team on the same page. Because I say all the time, if I say one thing to staff, and a principal says another thing to staff, they're gonna listen to their principal 10 times out of 10 over me, because that's the person they have to face every day when they walk in the door. And so it's sending the expectation that when we talk about the language with kids, or when we talk about what we value with kids in the classroom, we don't set up that heightened anxiety. So I'm gonna give you a perfect, is MCAS, right? And I realize there, you know, it is something that is valued in different ways in different communities, and that'll be part of what I'll have to figure out is how that's valued. What I don't personally value and have a lot of time for is talking about how this is the most important test you're gonna take all year long. Because if you want to talk about a way to raise anxiety in kids and staff, that's a certain way to do it. And so messaging that through my office, or through me, to our leadership team, to our principals, our APs, our coordinators, to teachers, to message directly to kids. There's not as much direct, if I have the opportunities, absolutely, I'll say the same thing. But it's important to make sure that we're aligned in our approach for that, from my office, all the way through the classroom.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So over the last 12 months, could you give us an example of a difficult conversation or question that you have navigated, and that you would characterize as politically charged? Could you describe for us the situation, who you involved when you were managing the situation, what you did, and the outcome?
Yeah, so there's been a few. And so I also want to recognize, right, that this is a public forum, I'm talking about, you know, politically charged situation in the community where I currently reside, or not where I currently work, and where people in that community may be interested in watching to see what I say here as well, too, so. You know, with that being said, while I have, while I have an example I'd like to talk about more, I don't want to talk about it because I want to protect kids, and that's the most important thing I can do. So I'll talk a little bit more about the example I just talked about, which was about the extended day. You know, we had agreed, essentially, that this was something that was aligned with what our goals were as a district. We had a challenge in, you know, I had made some recommendations to our committee about how we were gonna go through this process, that ultimately wound up going in a different direction. It became very charged in the community, we put out community surveys about, you know, eventually, by the time we kind of rolled around a community survey about lengthening the day for kids, the community was split with a plurality in favor, or, sorry, plurality, but not a majority of parents in favor, and a plural, against, excuse me, a plurality, but not a majority of staff in favor. And the community was split, and was gonna have to make a decision about what to do. So, you know, as I talked about my messaging, right, it's important for me, I know I have blind spots, so I want to involve people in my conversation with the community that help complement my blind spots. I always involve my assistant superintendent with sort of that academic lens. I always involve my admin assistant as somebody who has the lens of a resident of the community and how they're gonna respond. You know, I will run things past my school committee chair before I put them out publicly, sometimes, depending upon what's being communicated out, or just with other people that are around, right, my leadership team. You know, ultimately, you know, the community made a decision not to do that, and we kind of need to move forward as a result. But I, you know, my core value is about doing what's right for kids. And if it means that I need to take some slings and arrows as an adult from other adults to try to do what's right for kids, I'm gonna do that every day of the week, so, thanks.
I have a follow-up question.
Yeah.
What have you observed as an effective and thorough district-based response to discriminatory or hate-based incidents?
Yeah, so one is that you need to pull together, you need to pull together the people that are directly involved and identify, you know, first of all, sort of what happened, why did it happen? I mean, so that there's some facts out there, because what can happen is that speculation can run rampant and wild, particularly on things like social media. So it's important to understand sort of the basis of what may have transpired. I think above and beyond that, it's important from, different communities have different expectations around what gets communicated out. And I think that's one of the things that I would need to learn as I come here, is what are the expectations here, and how is that aligned? And, you know, I think that it is, we come back to our values. And again, I said it before, I'll say it again, collective responsibility for all of our kids, all the time, all of us. And reiterating that, and if there is an incident of hate or discrimination that's not aligned with that core value, one of the best things I've ever heard said and I've internalized is, you know something is a core value by the way you feel when it's been violated. And just being blunt and direct about that, what happened is not aligned with our core values here in this community. We do not stand for it, and we need to work together to do better, so.
Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. And how have you addressed requests for sensitive information from the media or just a concerned district citizens?
I mean, it depends, I mean, some things are just completely privileged, right? And, you know, basically, ignoring doesn't work, but you kind of need to say legally, I can't respond. And so that's that. When there are things that are sensitive, part of it is knowing your audience. You know, we are actually in a little bit of a, you know, relative media black hole in Bill Ricker right now. The greater Boston media market kind of ends at our southern border, and the Lowell media market kind of dropped us a little while. They're trying to bring us back right now, so. But I try to develop a good relationship with reporters, so that we, and we lost our local town paper last year, so. You know, I try to develop relationships with members of the media where we can, you know, there'll be times when I can say some things on the record, and there'll be other times when I'll try to provide some context around a sensitive topic that I won't go there, but will at least try to add some understanding, or say, I can't go there because I'm trying to protect kids, for example. Because I'll come back to, it's that key value and priority. So that's on the media side. On the concerned citizen's side, I don't do well with email banter back and forth. Once, maybe twice, if you want to do that, let's come into the office, let's have a conversation. Or I'll meet you somewhere else, that's totally fine. And those conversations aren't always uncomfortable, but it's a lot easier to argue back and forth with some, and you talked about sensitive information, it's kind of related in the same topic, right? It's a lot easier to argue back and forth with somebody and get confrontation when they're an avatar of who they actually are, electronically, as opposed to seeing somebody face-to-face and staring them in the eye and having a conversation, and, you know, acknowledging where we may disagree, but here's what we can agree on, and here's how we move forward together.
Thank you.
So, thanks.
Westwood is, instead of having a select menu, we have a select board, we call it. I would say you recently adopted a policy of, the town should be very, very sensitive and supportive of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So the question is, our school leaders must be champions of inclusion. How do you advocate for diversity, equity, and inclusion among teams or individuals who do not yet understand their value? And what specific actions have you taken that illustrate your commitment to students and families' belonging?
Yeah, so I think part of it is that those words don't mean the same thing to everybody. And certainly, some of what's happening in the national narrative is, and national mediascape is influencing that. And so, you know, sometimes I'll say that, you know, what we're really talking about is belonging. Making sure that every child has a place of belonging and is valued for who they are. Because that's kind of ultimately sort of the key of what, you know, the DEI work that we do is about. I don't remember exactly how you phrased the question, so if I'm not getting at the question, then, or if you don't mind repeating it just for a second.
It's about people who do not yet understand.
Okay, yeah, and so again, some of that is having the face-to-face conversations, you know, if we get accused of your, I mean, we've heard the rhetoric, right, we're getting accused of indoctrinating our kids. You know, and I will tell you, that's some of what I work with in my current context. Let's come in and have a conversation, let's talk about what's actually happening in the classroom. Let's talk about what this lesson actually was. Let's, and it's not what you think it is, right? That there's some of that direct one-on-one conversation, if they're willing to come in. As I said to one of my groups earlier, is there anybody that sends me an email about this stuff that is a resident, has a question mark in it, as opposed to 12 exclamation points? Let's have a conversation. In terms of like, some of the efforts that we've done, and, because I think it was the first part of your question, right, was the work that we've done. I want to, I'll talk about one of my own personal inflection points, because it's been, the community where I currently work, it's been challenging to take on some of that work in a different way. When you talk about the values professed here in Westwood, that's part of the reason this is a really appealing opportunity for me, because I find that they're more aligned with my own personal core values. And I got asked a question on the parent forum about how much, I thought it was a really great question, or the community forum. How much does the superintendent lead the values of the community versus how much does the community lead the values of the superintendent in the school system? And there's a great push and pull that needs to take place in response to that. And so I think about what happened after George Floyd's murder. And, you know, I worked with our town manager and our police chief, and we put out a statement of the community that, you know, quite honestly, was bland. And, you know, we heard the kudos from sort of the regular, usual folks in town that, yeah, it was great. But then I started hearing from some recent alumni, some kids. And one of them in particular, who was a student my last year in the classroom in 2005, who, when I was advisor to the school newspaper, was my editor-in-chief of the school newspaper, who's now living out in California, who was an individual of color, who reached out to me, and we talked for an hour on Zoom, and she told me straight up, your statement was, she used a stronger word, your statement was BS. And we talked, and we talked about her experiences. And I said, I can't sit idly by anymore and say what's politically safe in the community where I work. I need to go out and profess that value that I believe. And so I came out and I basically said, here's the things I didn't say that I should have. And this is the work, and coming out and being bold, initially, there was a great response to that. So we embedded in our strategic plan that we developed, one of those four core tenets of that plan was around racial equity, diversity, inclusion, and some of the steps we're taking around that. We now have our first-ever district-wide ready team. We're taking steps to be more conscious in our hiring process, to try to recruit and retain educators of color, to be more reflective of the diversity of our student body. We're getting some backlash on that now and again, and that's fine, I'll take it, because we're trying to do what's right for kids. But some of that is around tone-setting, again, about being important around values, so.
I get the fun question about the school committee.
Yeah.
So, you know, the roles and responsibilities of the school committee, sometimes they're very clear between the school committee and superintendent. Sometimes there's more ambiguity. Can you describe some situations where those roles and responsibilities have challenged you, between, say, the school committee and superintendent? And how would you work with us to address those if you were our superintendent?
So I'm gonna acknowledge, right, the difficulty in answering this question, because talking about contentious relations potentially in terms of roles and responsibilities with superintendent and school committee, with the school committee that's potentially looking to hire me, hopefully. I want to acknowledge some of the awkwardness of that question, but I appreciate it, because it's important, right? So some of this is about having open dialogue. And that there are times where I've had to gently, and then perhaps more forcefully, talk to my committee about what their role is and what their role isn't. Because I understand as committee members, like, you get calls from concerned constituents, whether they're parents or whether they're community members, about something that may be going on in the school. And you have an something that may be going on in the school. And you have an obligation to be responsive to them. At the same time, I would work to try to reinforce sort of what that chain of communication should be. That if somebody's calling you and saying, you know, this went on at the Deerfield School yesterday, what are you going to do about it? That hopefully your first response back is, have you called the principal of the school? And hopefully that's happening right now. That hasn't always happened with committee members that I've worked with, and we try to, we try to reinforce that. There have been times when there have been, I mean, I, listen, all of our meetings are certainly televised in public record, and we can go back. We had, we had a long, drawn-out, protected fight for a year and a half about some school committee members trying to establish where a particular bus stop should be in town, which is totally outside of the purview of the school committee. And that, that is, that is a fight that we had. And, and I hope that this committee is not interested in trying to establish where individual bus stops are. But, but there was a select board member involved in advocating, I mean, it, we had some crazy stuff going on. But again, that's about having individual conversations, and having the respect where we can do that, and establishing what those clear lines of communication are.
Can I ask a follow-up actually?
Sure.
It's going to be, I didn't want to, it was back on.
Yeah.
When, on the extended day.
Yeah.
What do you, what would you do differently? What did you learn about, not about, I know there was issue made by the school committee, community, but what would you, if you reflect, what would you have done differently? Or what do you, what did you learn personally about leadership, your leadership?
I appreciate, so, I mean, there are a couple of things there, right? And, and in an ideal world, you know, you, you're able to build community support for the idea, and then you move to execute. Unfortunately, because the way that our contracts were written, we couldn't even entertain the conversation about having a longer day for kids without changing the contract. And if you signal in the, talking a little inside baseball here, but I've said this publicly in our community, so I'll say it here. If you say new that this is something we have to do, that's a, that's a non, that's an unconditional, this has to happen, you have no leverage at the bargaining table to actually be able to pay for that kind of a change that you're trying to make occur. So, I mean, I had heard as a superintendent for 10 years, our day's not long enough, our day's not long enough, we need to do more for kids, we need, we need more recess. Like, I can't have recess right now at our middle schools, because we wouldn't be time on learning if we did. So, we had heard that, but at the same time, the way this rolled out, we settled a contract just before our fall town meeting. And our charter, all of our contracts have to be, go through town meeting and be voted on by town meeting, which is an interesting, yep, yeah, I saw the wow in response to that. That's, that's one of the things that we do. And we work to allocate funding through that in some ways, and we can be creative around that. And so we settled the contract a week and a half before we started our fall town meeting in October. And so we were, and there was a significant increase in salaries because we were asking staff to work a longer day. So I had talked with the school committee, and we came out, and they had directed me that they were going to vote a motion of intent, a motion, a resolution of intent to lengthen the day at our meeting on September 26th. What happened was the memo that I wrote to the school committee about that, our processes that goes public before it gets talked about at the committee meeting. And all the stuff happened on Facebook related to that memo before I ever got a chance to explain the memo in a public setting. And sort of what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it. And the ball had already started rolling at that point in time. So something that I, I should have done differently is I should not have let that memo just speak for itself. I needed to, I, you know, in retrospect, I needed to be more proactive in that communication, how it aligned with where we're going as a district. I mean, there were some other factors at play there. There needed to be a more personal touch than, and what happened is because that happened, then are the process we were going through changed as a result.
Thanks.
Excellent.
Thank you. Follow-up, Dory?
Thank you. Who, you may have already answered this partially, but who do you see as the most critical stakeholders for public schools in our community?
Kids. Number one, right? After that, everybody else comes at least second, if not further down the list. But, I mean, you know, you don't, I don't, I can't really rank order anybody else aside from kids. I mean, parents obviously play such a huge and critical, parent, you know, parents and guardians, families play such a, such a critical role. Teachers and parents and support staff play such a critical role, and it's really got to be a collective partnership among, among those groups. But kids are first every day of the week.
And what do those relationships look like in your current district? And if you were to go to a new district, how would you build a line of communication to municipal leadership and all this?
Yeah, so, yeah, so I didn't necessarily talk about municipal leadership in there, but really, I mean, it's funny. So when I go into elementary schools, I go into like kindergarten classrooms, and I explain to kids what my job is. And there's another, there's a story I could, I could tell, that's, that's a whole lot of fun. I told a couple of different groups today about kindergarten kids and snow days, and I'll save that for some other time if I come here to the district and can share it. But the, one of the things I say to kids is my job, is I'm in charge of all the schools in Bill Ricker, and my number one job is to make sure that you have fun while you're learning. And so that, that's, that's kind of the first thing. As it relates to support from municipal officials, I mean, ultimately, there's one pot of money in the, in the town. There is one tax base, there's one set of revenue that's coming in from the state. And it's important that, that, you know, I have a really well-developed relationship, and in the case of Bill Ricker, with our town manager here, with the town administrator, so that we understand each other's needs and the push and pulls as it relates to how those resources are allocated in the community. So what we do, and I've been doing for, I guess, 12 years now, even back when I was in the business manager, or the assistant super finance and operations role, is I've worked with the town manager where we've spent a lot of time working behind the scenes to identify a budget number. Not the actual what goes into the budget, right? But at least a number that's, so the town manager can say that his, you know, what he's bringing forward is consistent with what the guidance he has from the select board. What I'm bringing forward is something that allows us to meet our, our goals and objectives. It may not be all of our goals and objectives, but at least is responsive and responsible to that. So that we can come out together as one community, saying, here's what our budget is. Because the alternative, and this was the case before, you know, before I was involved in the process with some of my predecessors, the school committee would vote one, would initially vote one number. The town manager and the select board would vote a very different number. There'd be a multimillion-dollar gap between those two numbers. There'd be sort of this theatrical process about revoting a new number every single meeting. And ultimately, what we were asking the community to do is to, and, and having to go to town meeting with something, what we were asking the community to do is to decide what's more important, teachers or police officers. And nobody should be put in that position. And if you do that, you're already losing a battle, and you're sowing seeds of distrust in the community. So that's why it's, it's really important to have that relationship behind the scenes, so that there is a strategic approach to how you can take that, that set of resources and allocate them in a way where, you know, school and public safety and DPW and parks and rec and, and everything else really can collaborate with one another to do what's best for the community as a whole, consistent with the, with the overall town values.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So speaking of the budget, can you walk us through the stage of your typical budget process?
Yeah.
Literally from start, whether it's September or October, all the way through, who do you engage with? When and how do you communicate at each stage?
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, we're in a, we're in a different context in Bill Ricker than, than you are here in Westwood. And it was great to see that you had Chapter 70 money come in recently that is going to allow the FY24 budget to be in a much better place than it would have been otherwise. We lost students in Bill Ricker for a long time over the years, and partly it's just an aging demographic in town. There are fewer kids than there used to be. So we are so far, because of the demographic enrollment, even with the SOA passing, even though we're seeing increasing enrollment right now, we're only a minimum A district. So we get 30 bucks a kid is what's on our cherry sheet right now. So, you know, that's less than a half of percent of our budget is what we're seeing in, in Chapter 70 increase. Way, way less than half a percent of our budget. So, that being said, so the process we, and I will tell you, in 11 years of being superintendent, every year we have presented a level budget, every year we have had a level services budget, and every year we've had to come to a number that is less than that level services budget. And it's not because, what I would say is the town has about $30 million under the levy limit right now. And it's just where, how its priorities and how it uses that are a little bit different. And so that is what it is. So for my process from a budget-building perspective, so that the, the budgets are only as good as, A, the stories that you tell with the numbers, and B, how well they're aligned to your objectives and your strategy that you're trying to achieve. So I argue that while we don't say it explicitly, I mean, that starts with a strategy development process, because then you're prioritizing, you know, what's important, what's valued. Sort of from the more technical side, so working backwards, our town meeting is first, first Tuesday in May, and then runs every Tuesday and Thursday night until it's done. We're a representative town meeting, and so that's, that's a different format. And generally, we go at least four nights. It's been up to seven nights in the spring. So it lasts for a while.
Do you imagine?
So I'm taken by your reaction, that's not the norm here, which I appreciate.
Imagine being out in the field.
Yeah. And, and we have, and we have a fall time meeting too, where, and, you know, we've established our fall time meeting is where we do capital and one-time needs. You know, our town manager is really great with, with fiscal budgeting. And so, you know, we've got about roughly $7 million, six to $7 million of free cash every year, some of that we put away in debt stabilization for, like, to help offset our high school project. We always have a list of capital needs that we bring forward for building or repair. We even, like, one year, with his support, like, we needed the new math curriculum adoption, we actually funded that through, through a fall town meeting war article. But on the regular operating budget side, so working backwards, we have to be done by spring town meeting in May. We've got to be at the finance committee sometime in April. Right now, I'm scheduled to go April 13th, although I may have to push that date back a little bit. By town charter, I have to have a budget number by the end of, by however many days. It is basically the end of February. So working backwards from that, we start to do our initial role, kind of end of November, beginning of December. I sit down with every, we have broken, broken, we have broken up responsibilities. So my director of finance and operations will be with our operations side, so that's facilities, technology. With technologies that we're structured a little bit differently there, it's not instructional technology, but like hardware IT folks. So those folks will meet with my director of finance and operations. My assistant superintendent will meet with our curriculum people. And I, along with my assistant superintendent, director of finance and operations, will meet with all of our principals and our preschool director and our special education director.
Can you meet one-on-one?
One-on-one. Yeah, initially. Initially, one-on-one. And we do some initial role of, of, you know, I have guidelines from my committee about class size at the elementary level. And so based upon that, I can kind of say, here's our demographic projections. You know, right now, we're looking like we might need to add a grade four teacher, but reduce a grade three, because there's a bubble in grade three this year. This one's kind of teetering on the edge, and maybe it'll make it through the budget process, maybe it won't, but it's going to be a decision point that we need to make. So we have those meetings through December and into January. I ask them for their wish lists. And both on the operating side, on the capital side. So it, it starts there. And part of their wish lists are generated by their conversations with their school councils, so that there's that involvement at the, at the school level with, with stakeholders there. Ultimately, it's my job then to kind of put that all together. Again, I have those conversations behind the scene with the town manager, kind of starting in January, and then by the time we get to sort of mid-February, we've, we've identified a number that, that works in our community. And then we have a budget subcommittee is the process that we use, so that's two members of the school committee that will meet with me, with my assistant superintendent, my director of finance and operations. They are not publicly televised meetings, because they're more working meetings. So they're held in my conference room. We invite a couple of members from the finance committee to come join us. Or a couple of members of the finance committee are there, so they can kind of see the decision-making process that we're going through. Because generally, the number we vote, when we vote it in February, is not a balanced budget. So this year, what I presented publicly, we had to reduce $470,000 from what we voted publicly. And then we go through that process of identifying adds and subtracts and prioritizing. Because it's not just subtracting. I mean, I do joke, I went to college, I got a math degree, and all I get to do is subtract, but that's, that's not really true, right? Because we need to be strategic about how we add. So when I talk about how we add the SEL coaches earlier, you know, those are, those are important things. And so you've got to make some tough choices around that. But we ultimately, again, in those, you know, I have regularly, regular meetings with my leadership team. I'll give them updates on where we are at the budget process. And so we'll collaboratively talk about if we had to identify reductions, where they may be. And I've, I think, I'd like to think, and it's true, given what, what has happened, is that we've developed a collaborative culture at the table that was not always there, where people are actually sometimes willing to sacrifice something in their own school because they see that somebody else's school needs something more. That's the kind of, you know, values you want to have. Again, that's, that collective responsibility about all means all. And so, in that budget subcommittee process, we work to prioritize, we normally go through a couple of different tiers of what we're identifying to reduce that number. When we get to the public school committee meetings, then, I'll provide regular updates about, you know, we started at 470, we're now down to 210 because we made these changes. Or whether it's, you know, projecting a little bit of increased revenue and circuit breaker in our case, Chapter 70 in your case. You know, those are things that we can do. And then ultimately, we come to, I ask the budget subcommittee to vote on a recommended list of reductions to get done, reductions and additions, to get to our bottom-line number. They then take that recommendation, goes to our full school committee of five members, who then vote up or down on that, and then we build the budget that way. The final step is going to town meeting. And actually, we got finance committee in the middle there. I kind of sickly enjoy going to finance committee. I, I don't know why, other than it's a, it's a good opportunity to kind of, you know, dig in deep and talk about, like, you know, how, what the town is providing is actually impacting and benefiting kids. And in a way that doesn't necessarily happen in a school committee forum in the same way, because there's not as much give and take in that format with members that aren't already ingrained in the education component as there is a finance committee. And I'll even say, like, I was honored to be, the vice chair of our finance committee invited me during, it was, it was a dual thing, talking about how we go through that process and, and some COVID stuff. But I spoke with Associate Commissioner Johnston from DESI at, at the State's Association of Town Finance Committees a couple of years ago, was asked to present and talk about our process there. And then we get to town meeting. And, you know, in my community, I'm the one that presents the budget. And that, I, you know, I'm not sure what the format here is here, and that's something, I know you're telling me what's the first of May, I think, is coming up.
It's first of May, yeah.
You know, I kind of want to see what that process looks like. And, you know, we, you know, I'll present, I'll talk about, you know, here's, here's some educational data that shows you what you're getting, what you're getting for your dollars. Here's the steps we went through, here's our budget, voted up or down. I'm happy to say that, you know, and again, we're representative town meeting, so we actually have, like, recorded votes. Every member has a number, they have a clicker. 240 elected representatives in our representative town meeting, no, they're never all filled. But I've never had more than, let's say, 25 or 30 votes against a school budget in the, in the 12 years I've been doing this, including the year in the business office. So that's a long nuts-to-bolts answer.
That's exactly what I wanted.
But you asked for it, so, so there you go.
How big's your budget, just quick one?
Um.
Operating, about?
Yeah, so, so right, actually, it's a shame, that's a number I shouldn't know off the top of my head.
About, about?
Yeah, I mean, we're roughly in the, in the little over $70 million range, so. Now, we don't have shared costs as part of that budget. That's, that's part of it, a separate thing in a town budget, so health insurance, things like that are separate.
Benefits.
Yeah, benefits, those sit out separate, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Just following up on that, you know, you mentioned your subcommittee, you mentioned behind-the-scenes discussions with the town manager, all of which, I acknowledge, have to happen, right?
Yeah.
We, we have our own budget steering, and especially when you're talking about additions and reductions. But how do you ensure that these conversations that you have, that you sort of explore privately?
Yeah.
Still engender public trust?
Yeah. And, and so I think part of that is you, you come out with a, I mean, you, you put all your budget documents out there. I mean, our budget documents for FY24 aren't out there right now, because they would be meaningless, because they're not balanced.
Right.
And so, you know, one of the things I've certainly learned is you don't ever want to overpromise and under-deliver. So if I put out a budget right now that said we're doing all these things while we still have to make budget cuts, that, that's, that's no good. But, you know, we, we put all those documents out there publicly. Anybody can inspect our budget, see what's there. You know, we're transparent about the decision-making process that we go through. And again, while we have some of those conversations in, in sort of a, you know, non-televise setting, it's to, it's to your very point, right? Because we're talking about people's, actual people's livelihoods. And you also don't want to, like, if we're talking about, and we're, we're not talking about this, right? But if we said that we were looking at, because I've, I'm hesitant to even say this, right? Because I don't want to engender any backlash, either in my community or here, right? But I've seen communities that have done this, and I don't think it's a good decision, but said, we're getting rid of all of our librarians. Right? If the first time somebody hears about that is a budget subcommittee meeting, and you haven't had a conversation with somebody directly, that's awful. At the same time, if you've talked about that, and it winds up not happening because you found another way of, of getting there. you found another way of getting there, and you've sent those staff members through that level of worry and heartbreak and distrust, that's no good for anybody. So that's why some of those conversations happen behind closed doors. And I'm sorry to even bring up that example, but again, not on my radar, just whether it's here or in Billerica. But I just use that, yeah, I just use that as an example, right? And so it's about transparency of documentation, it's about talking, and it's about talking about the process and using that as an example and saying, this is why we need to have some of the conversations in this way. And then it's just kind of being there to, listen, my, our town meeting, as you can guess by the fact that we go somewhere between four and seven nights, is not afraid to ask questions. And so we answer those questions in a very open and honest way as best we can when we're there.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Please tell us about measures you took in your current district to maintain or enhance student and staff safety. What are your thoughts and experiences with lockdown drills? What would your response, both short-term and long-term, be if a student were rumored to have a gun at school?
So there's a lot there in that question, and what I would say is I'm grateful to have a really great relationship with our public safety officials in town. You know, I, we recently had a changeover in police chief, but it was, our former deputy chief became police chief, so we already had a great working relationship. And we have certainly had a number of incidences over the course of the year. So part of that is around planning and preparation. So we have a public safety meeting every fall that involves me, my assistant superintendent, my director of facilities and operations, my facilities director, all of my principals, police and whoever they want to bring, fire and whoever they want to bring, EMTs and whoever they want to bring. We invite our vocational school that is within Billerica to be part of that conversation because ultimately, it's one town. Our special education collaborative, Valley Collaborative, where I associate as the chair of the board of directors, is invited to that meeting because one, you know, all part of one town. Where we initially, at that conversation that we have, we want to make sure that our emergency preparedness protocols are up to date, are in place. One of the things we're trying to focus on right now is around like reunification points should something happen, like, those are the kinds of things that we want to make sure are reviewed on an annual basis. So that's some of the nuts and bolts. We did implement Alice drills in the district a number of years back. And there were some mixed feelings about that, and I think it's really important that they be age-appropriate. So what you're doing with high school kids should look very different than what you do with elementary school students. And as we went through, but it was something our community was really asking for. And as we went through that process, we actually went and visited, like, we took care to visit other elementary schools that were implementing Alice drills to see how they did it so we could kind of get a sense of eyes on what we thought we liked and what we thought we didn't like about what other communities were doing. So that was important to us. You know, we, one of the things we implemented a number of years back, which I didn't see here, and it may not, I don't know whether or not it's just because I wasn't screened because I certainly had whatever role I was in, I was certainly asked to sign in when I went in the buildings. But we added the Raptor system a number of years ago, I don't know if you've heard of that system or not. So that's something that we put in, so at every front desk, somebody comes in, they have to show an ID. That ID gets scanned, it actually gets cross-registered, or gets cross-referenced against the sex offender registry list. We can also put alerts into the system so that if there may be a restraining order against somebody or no trespass or something like that, that it can flag that in the system so that somebody knows that they're there. I mean, we have the buzzer system and we have the cameras outside, but like, that's an extra step that we took, that we liked that system, we implemented. The challenge with security always, every parent knows that they, every parent wants their childhood to go to school and know that they're going to be safe. At the same time, if you create an environment of sort of over-security, then you're losing something about a warm and welcoming environment. So you've got to strike that right balance that's responsive to your community needs. And I know that it's been part of your strategic plan to talk about safety and security, and there was a recent audit you went through and some things related to that. And so that would be one of the things that I would need to figure out about what's appropriate, what's consistent with values here in this community around that. But those are just some of the steps that we've taken. To your point about if there's a rumor that a student has a gun, just to use that as an example. First of all, every member of my staff should know, from admin to teacher to parent to custodian to cafeteria work, to anybody that's in the building, should know if they hear anything like that, they need to let somebody on the administrative team know immediately. Whether that's by call, whether it's by run-of-the-h, you know, that's got to happen immediately. First call is always to the police department in a situation like that. Because that's something that's at a different level of seriousness than sort of, you know, run-of-the-mill, there's something going on. That being said, we also want to make sure that we coordinate our response with them, whether it's with our SROs in the school, so that we don't overreact just based upon total wild rampant speculation. And there is also the question about whether or not this is just one member or this is something that there may be some evidence that's out there, and again, I'll talk, social media has its pros, but it has a whole lot of cons too. That's at a different level. The process that we go through for how we triage that depends upon, you know, the specificity of the threat, you know, what we're aware of, and it's really a collaborative relationship. I mean, I, anything like that, I get out of my, I get out of my office at town hall, I go to that school, and we essentially set a command. And maybe this is more than just a rumor, right? But we've had bomb threats, we've had other things that have happened. Where I'm out of the office, I'm in that principal's office, that's a command center for the decisions that we need to make, not just around how do we respond, but how do we communicate to parents and to the broader community. Whenever something like that happens, it's important, and this is why it's important to have that relationship with public safety officials. There is never a time, I am generally the author of the letters that go out, but I want to make sure that the police chief is on board with whatever letter that goes out to make sure that we're saying the same thing and we're saying it with one voice, and as much as we can co-sign those letters, it sends a message to the community that it's not just the school department saying it, the police is doing something else, we're doing this in collaboration, conjunction with one another. That's, and there are some things that we can't say, and we make sure that in that statement, we say, you know, this is an ongoing, you know, please be aware that as this is an ongoing investigation that involves the police, we're not able to comment any further at this time. Should we be able to comment further, please know that we will communicate with you directly. And then there's in terms of how does that communication roll out? We're very, I'm very conscious about that. So the impacted, first of all, staff and the impacted community need to know first because if you, if it's not like an immediately urgent situation, right? Because if you send something and staff hears from parents before they've heard from you, that's a problem. But you also, once you know that staff have it, you know that other parents in the community are going to have it because the texts start going. And so I say to staff, please be aware, it's, you know, I'll send a message at 10:30, this message is going out to families at 10:45. We send that directly to families. And then we, you know, once it goes to families in that school, you know it's going to the broader community, so maybe a half an hour after that, we put it out through other channels, depending upon the nature of what it is. And so we have really well-established protocols about, I mean, as, you can kind of hear from the detail in the response, we have well-established protocols for how we respond to incidents. And I realize I went maybe a little far afield from your question of a rumor, because we would send something out more if it substantiated, or if it's not substantiated, but it's got enough traction that there's concern in the community, then that may be something to that community that says, you know, this didn't have, I don't need to, I don't need to put out something to the whole town that says, hey, somebody said this happened at this school, it didn't happen. That's just like, what are you talking about? That message will get out through other channels that don't need to be through me. But the more serious events, we have a, you know, we work hard to make sure we have a consistent communication protocol set up ahead of time. So, thanks.
Thank you. The Westwood School District has historically received high marks from ranking companies. In fact, everybody who moved to the town is there for the school district.
Yeah.
And you'll hear, and we will hear.
We can hear it.
What do you think makes Westwood that good? And how might you help us get from good to great?
So I will tell you, I loved having the opportunity to go around all the schools today. That was awesome. I mean, I wish I could have hit all of them. There just, obviously not enough time in one day and kind of going through the process and needing to meet with everybody, I did. Starting off here at the high school, and we went down to the preschool and hung out there for a little bit too, just seeing how alive and vibrant, you know, obviously, they're getting ready for the, I can't remember the name, essentially the Community Arts Day tomorrow.
Encounter with the Arts.
Encounter with the Arts, thank you. You know, they're getting ready for that tomorrow, so there may have been a little extra heightened level of activity as a result because of that. But everywhere I went, I saw smiling faces on kids and I saw smiling faces on staff. And I saw, it comes back to that instructional court piece, how do students relate to teachers? I saw that alive and well here at the high school. I saw that alive and well over the middle school, I saw that alive and well over the Downey when I was there. And so I think, I think it starts with that, having a culture that is about kids and that really reinforces that and raises that value that it's about kids. Because I saw that today. I think you've benefited from having some really stable leadership in this district as well too. You know, it's, I'm sure the community is sad that Emily's taking a step back into a different role. I've had the opportunity to interact with her in some professional settings in my role in the state in some different times over the years. But she's somebody who kind of came up from within the community and has done a great job here. And I've worked on the state level with John Antonucci as part of the superintendents association executive committee and have had a really good relationship with John. So that level of stability, I think I'm on leadership saying that there's a consistent direction that we're going, I think goes a long way to having great results for kids. And that's why, one of the things I said in my opening remarks, like, I'm only halfway through my career as a superintendent, I've got at least another decade to go. And so I certainly wouldn't want to be coming and doing anything if I were to be hired that would disrupt that continuity of leadership. I'd be somebody coming from the outside for the first time in, I don't know how long. And so with that, to your question about moving from good to great, you know, I would have some potentially new ideas that, whether it's from stops that I, that, stops that I've been, I've only really been at one stop, whether it's from the stop that I've been at, or things that I've learned from colleagues in other districts. And I do, you know, I haven't talked about it a bunch, but I'm really active in our state superintendents association. I was the president of our association last year. I'm actually rolling, I'm currently past president, kind of rolling off of our executive committee. But I've developed that network with other superintendents across the state to see what great things are happening in other communities that we can learn from and we can bring in. And so there may be some new ideas, but I'm also not going to come in and upset the apple cart with something that's working really well. And that's why it's important, when I talked about my entry plan, that question about what do we need to protect, what do we need to maintain, what's important to do, is a really important question because, you know, while there may be opportunities and while there may be challenges, if you get it, if you try to address those opportunities by upsetting and changing those things that are, whether they're cultural values or structurals that are in place that this community values and needs to protect and maintain, we're not going to do anything great there. But, you know, I don't, I can't say this about here, but I will tell you, like, in my current community, I mean, there are some things we do because it's the way we've always done it. I've tried to, I've tried to change that when it's not the right thing for kids, because that's never a great excuse for me, this is the way we've always done it, that doesn't work. If there's a better way, and we can communicate why it's a better way and how that ultimately helps kids. But your initial question about, at least from what I've seen, and I would want to dig more, obviously, if I came in, and that's why the entry plan. The level of joy and care I saw about kids walking around this place today just warmed my heart, and that was great to see.
Well, anybody else have any further questions?
No, I think we're going to turn it over to you. If you have questions for us, what can we say?
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess what I would, you know, what I would ask sort of generally, right? I mean, my, you know what, I'm going to turn the same question on you guys that I got asked in the community forum, because again, I think it's a great question. Now, you're, as elected officials, you're there to represent the people that, not just the people that elected you, but the people throughout the community, right? But as superintendent, how much would you, and again, hopefully, we're aligned as much as possible. If I were to be hired, now we're talking about values, how much of that is me sort of leading the values that I represent versus having to lead the values that the community represents? And again, hopefully, they're aligned, but sometimes they may not be. And it's, I'm going to tell you, it's a tough question I'm asking because I had to think for a minute before I answered it in the community forum, but I think it's a great, it's a great question.
I think we're kind of open for all kinds of suggestions. I mean, so I think we, I think we've encouraged our superintendent and teachers and the community. Every school committee meeting we have, we have public comments. And we also have something called office hours where we actually talk back and forth. So we're, I think, pretty open for ideas, suggestions, different ways of doing things. It doesn't mean we always agree on everything, but we at least are willing to listen and discuss it. So I think we have an environment where we just encourage ideas, new ideas, better ways to do things. And so that's, at least that's how we get started, and then we kind of discuss it further.
And in my experience, it hasn't been that the superintendent has been, you know, setting forth her values. It really feels to me like she's been responding to the values set forth by the community, and that's kind of by way of the school committee. So it is pretty collaborative, but I never feel like there are value-based decisions coming from just one individual that are kind of driving the boat.
Yeah, I mean, I think something I have heard Emily say a number of times is, if you're approaching, you know, a person, us, her, with respect and with a reasonable manner, we're going to hear you out. And so I think there are the underlying sort of human fundamental values that we all align on in the community, here at the table and in the district offices. I agree with you, Charlie, sometimes we don't 100% agree, but the value of hearing each other out and having respectful dialogue, I think, is something we lean back on.
We have a student on our school committee, so we had a discussion on wearing masks, with some people objecting to telling them. And so we asked the student, we said, well, we don't mind wearing masks, it's because we don't think we're going to get the disease, but we wear them because we're worried about our friends, mothers and fathers and grandparents who are at risk. So we're wearing them to protect them. So the best advice we got was from our student.
I would add also, so I think it's very collaborative, I think we do, but I also think transparency is key. You know, you see that in our budget, our budget is out there for everyone, including you, right? To see, the building project, I think, was a good example of that. We had 75 public forums on that, trying to get the community involved. The office hours that Charlie mentioned, we implemented those because we were very frustrated with the lack of ability to communicate with the public during public discussion, during public participation. And we wanted a more informal session where people just show up and say, this is bothering me, right? And so I think that's critical, that we're approachable, that we listen to people regardless of the viewpoint, and, you know, to Dory's point, we're always willing to engage in, oh, I can't, I think I speak for everyone when I say we're always willing to engage in discussion as long as, you know, it's respectful, because that's sort of the Westwood tone. You know, I think Westwood is a decorous community, I think people care about each other, they look out for each other. It's a small town, and I think it's, that part of it is very important, at least to me, that we hear each other, we're respectful, but that we, as a school committee and the superintendent, are transparent in our communications and in our decisions, and we, you know, fully sort of explain the thinking behind them. People will not agree with us, as we know, but at least we can say we tried to explain where we're coming from.
Yeah, I appreciate, and, you know, that it's okay to disagree if we can disagree agreeably, right? I mean, that's ultimately what that comes down to. And, you know, I've said this to a lot of different groups today, is that I want to be surrounded by people that are going to tell me I'm full of it when I need to be told, because that's, we all have blind spots, right? And so, like, if every time somebody disagrees with us and we just say, no, they don't know what they're talking about, we never get better, we never grow ourselves individually. And so, you know, it's good to hear that same kind of conversation from all of you as committee members here. Said a little bit perhaps more eloquently than I just phrased it, but the underlying theme, I think, is the same, so.
Well, thank you very much for joining us, I thank you for your time and all your responses, I thank you so much.
Say hello to the governor tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, I had mentioned, so we're fortunate to have Governor Healy coming to our district tomorrow to, yeah, I've been trying to, try to help sort of orchestrate some of that simultaneously too.
It's a couple of days.
So, yeah, I mean, people will see this, it will have been in the past by the time they see this.
Yes.
But no, she's coming because of the supplemental budget appropriation, continuing universal free school meals for kids. universal free school meals for kids. I had the secretary's office reach out to me, and so, we're going to be hosting her for a visit tomorrow, and she's going to have lunch with kids tomorrow at one of our schools, which is awesome. So, so, we're happy to have that as well, too. But, and I just want to say thank you to all of you, you know, as committee members, for inviting me into this process, for hosting me. Thank you to the principals who took me around today and all the staff who spoke with me. Thank you to the kids who engage with me. I mean, again, that's ultimately what we're all about. And it was just a great, awesome experience for me all day long. So, whatever this committee decides, I wish you the best and hope to see you all again soon. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we need a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn the meeting, second? All of us are aye?
Aye.
Meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, Holly.